This conference will now be recorded.
Bernie let me know that his work was going into overtime. He's doing construction, doesn't have a lot of control over the hours. So he apologized for not making it this evening. Looks like Michael's joining in. So it is the rest of us. Are there any, well, I guess I should just say, it looks like everybody's got their commissioner videos on generally muted, generally only commissioners video on unless people are trying to get our attention. You can use the chat as well. We do some detailed participation instructions on the second page of the agenda. Are there any agenda changes? I wanted to add two just short items to the other business. One would be actually a little just update on scheduling as well as a update on some correspondence I got. So we can do that later. Anything else? Okay, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. And you could unmute yourself, you could turn on your video, you could put something in the chat.
So I, this is Abby Crocker. I don't know if you can hear me. I think I'm unmuted. But I, I would, I would, I have actually something I'd like to, to mention to the, to the committee.
You go ahead.
So if it's okay, I have about a four minute sort of comment statement ask. That's a follow up to an email that I had sent to Paul. So I don't know if you've gotten a chance to see it, but I sent Paul an email about Swift Street Extension and the official map. So I was just gonna, to briefly sort of go through this as quickly as I can, about takes about four minutes, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I'll say, "I'm here to ask that you please add an agenda item to a planning commission meeting in the near future to review the official map in relation to the Swift Street Extension, and consider a vote on removing the proposed Swift Street Extension from the official map. If built, the Swift Street Extension would be a commercial throughway extending from Shelburne Road to Heinsburg Road, right through a sensitive natural area that is described as the green lungs of the city. The road would cross sensitive Class II wetlands and a 500-year-old floodplain, as well as disrupt essential forest blocks and wildlife corridors. In addition, the road would divert traffic away from the underutilized Kennedy Drive and increase traffic at the corner of Dorset and Swift Streets, which is the entrance of Veterans Memorial Park and the city's core for outdoor recreation and children's activities. Moreover, the road would drive commercial and residential development away from city center and into the natural areas of the southeast quadrant, which is the opposite of what was intended for city center. I appreciate that the road has been on the map for over 40 years, and want to draw attention to the fact that the road was placed on the map to be a potential second egress for the Village at Dorset Park neighborhood. Life and development patterns in South Burlington have drastically changed since the proposed Swift Extension was placed on the map, and the intention that placed the road on the map is no longer relevant. In addition, since that time, other east-west roads have been built, removed from the map, or are now being planned for. Specifically, we've seen the four-lane Kennedy Drive built, and we've seen the Dorset Heights to Cider Mill connection removed from the map. We've also seen the addition of more planned east-west connection roads in the SEQ, such as Autumn Hill and Old Cross. Most recently, we've seen the approved but not yet built additional two east-west roads in the Cider Mill Development, connecting Dorset Street to Heinsburg Road. In 2015, over 100 residents from all over South Burlington submitted a petition to the city to please remove the Swift Extension from the official map until and unless updated unbiased analyses regarding its necessity and full impact are conducted, noting that the effect the proposed Swift Extension would have on traffic volume, surrounding wildlife corridors, natural areas, and neighborhoods had never been studied. Based on this community feedback, the Planning Commission agreed to do these studies and included Strategy 37 in the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, which reads, "Due to increased development and the desire to protect natural areas, natural resources, update the South Burlington-planned east-west roads analysis." While a comprehensive study of all the impacts of this proposed connector road has not been done, it is important to note that the new habitat block additions to Article 12 for the most recent Arrowood Report further highlight the importance of the natural resources in this location, strengthening the rationale that the Swift Extension should be removed from the map. At a minimum, a connection in this area should not allow for vehicular traffic. I am concerned that the multiple moving parts and complexities of city government have allowed important issues like the Swift Street Extension to slip through the cracks. For example, despite the Planning Commission agreeing to further study the impacts of the proposed Swift Extension on natural areas, which is the Strategy 37 included in the 2016 Comprehensive Plan I mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission also included a directly conflicting statement in the same document stating, "The planned commission evaluated the plant cross-town roads on the official map in 2003, and proposed a series of amendments that were adopted by City Council in December 2003. This Comprehensive Plan reaffirms that the remaining proposed road raised through the SEQ that are shown on the official map should be constructed. The issues surrounding the Swift Street Extension are longstanding and have been raised by concerned residents throughout the city for years. Concerned residents like myself have been going to community meetings like this one for decades, asking the city to address these issues. When the City Council, now moving on the resolution, excuse me, to realize the long promise to prompt permanent conservation easement of Wheeler Nature Park, the pending Act 250 updates, rezoning discussions in the southeast quadrant, and the focus surrounding alternative exits in the I-89, now is the time to address the issue of the Swift Street Extension. I am asking you to please protect our city's wetlands, wildlife corridors, natural areas, forests, and habitat blocks, and remove the Swift Extension from the official map. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Michael, go ahead.
Yes, I, well, I want to thank Abby for, for making that presentation. It's long overdue. And to note that over the two years that I've been on the commission, several commissioners have raised this issue, and for whatever reason, we somehow never got it on an agenda. So since it's with us now, I'd like to move that we place the issue of the Swift Street Extension on one of the next two or three planning meetings and deal with this, this problem finally and comprehensively.
I'd like to second that. I, when I read Abby's earlier message, I've given it a lot of thought, and I agree with that. I've been involved with the commission for five years. I came on right after that last comp plan was developed, and I know the conversation was happening when the comp plan was in development. And I also am seeing some very important decisions that have long-term impact that the city's going to be making with the PUD work that we're doing that will be requesting certain zoning changes, but also the timing of this I-89 interstate study is coming up in May, and the Regional Commission has stated that they're going to be listening closely to the City Council's considerations for that I-89 study. I think that the conversation about this Swift Street Extension has to happen soon before any zoning changes or that I-89 recommendation is made to the Regional Commission to at least let those entities know where we stand currently on that extension. So I second Michael's motion.
Okay, and I know this is something that Ted had specifically brought up in one of the last couple of meetings as well. Duncan, did you?
Yeah, I mean, I know we've talked about it in past meetings and for a while. I know at one point, we had an agenda item that was a thorough discussion of east-west connection as opposed to just one connection being this one. Is that something we're still looking at doing? Or are we just gonna go out and do this one on its own? Because we definitely did have an agenda that talked about all the east-west connections as a whole.
Good point. Ted, do you have your hand up? No? Michael?
Yeah, to Duncan's point, yes, we, I know, we've discussed east-west connectors in the past, but I forget the time. We, we didn't have a handle on what east-west connectors are, are in the works, like the two that Abby Crocker mentioned, the northern connection and the southern connection through Cider Mill from Dorset to Heinsburg Road. We didn't know about those, certainly I didn't.
So, but can we, I'd like to make sure we're not talking too much into the policy of this.
Yes, that was my point of order.
It's really only about the point of adding it to a future agenda, which is the specific motion. So...
That's what I was agreeing.
Yeah, yeah. So I think to that point, the only, I guess, comment I have about scheduling is, I know, Michael, your motion specifically says in the next meeting or two, and I know there, there might be a little like background data to collect. And with Paul, and part of my discussion for the other business at the end of the meeting is that we may not have staff support for the next few meetings. So I just want to make sure we don't make a motion where we're like stuck to a timeline if it winds up being three meetings from now, just because of, you know, packet creation issues. So I guess I'd like a friendly amendment to say more like the next few as possible.
Michael set up to two to three meetings, and I think it, I do think it's very important that we at least have the conversation before May, when this I-89 study is done. So I agree with that, yeah, maybe the one or two is difficult, but definitely with the three.
Yeah, I thought it said one to two. I just wanted to make sure we weren't locked into this month only. So, okay. Duncan?
Yeah, just to clarify, so are we putting, just talking about this particular east-west connection, or are we going to try to get information on the whole picture?
I guess that's a good question. Paul just popped, I know we had talked about, kind of collectively talking about them when we had brought it up in the past. Paul, did you have a?
I guess I would say that even with the focus being on a Swift Street Extension, that from a transportation perspective, it would be important to just look at the context of other ones, because I, because this, I certainly appreciate that this is a natural resources issue. It's also a transportation issue. And so I think it's, I'd recommend that you at least put it in the context of other existing or planned ones.
Yeah. It seems to make sense that the agenda item would also mention them, because we'd probably be talking, you know, collectively. Okay, any other comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor of adding this to a near agenda? I? Anyone opposed? Oh, that's all of us. So I can see everybody's hands. So it's unanimous. So we will get that scheduled and try to have some background data available for that discussion.
Thanks. Jessica, can you make sure that the City Council knows about this motion on 4-6?
Yeah, so in fact, I, I was just thinking about that. I think we want to mention this as part of our joint meeting. So I know that's kind of a future item on the agenda here tonight, but it does seem like mentioning that we're going to be talking about this is important. Okay, any other items not related to the agenda? And I apologize, I wasn't paying attention to the chat as much as I probably should have. That had been Bernie's job the last few meetings. So, so I guess just, I think we addressed all of these about not talking off the agenda. And Sandy, just so you know, Abby, I believe, was speaking on behalf of herself. She did not mention a group of residents other than the previous petition. Okay, I'm not seeing anything else unrelated to the agenda. So we can move to announcements and staff report. Does anyone have anything? Ted?
Just a brief thing. The loan properties in front of the DRB, and you just might want to sort of watch the proceedings there. I think it's an interesting situation that is brought there. So all I'm saying is just keep an eye out, and if you have a chance to look at any of the, the meetings on this, I think it would be helpful.
Great, thanks, Ted. Monica?
Actually, following on that, I did want to say that I've seen their presentation, both to the City Council, they also presented to the Affordable Housing Committee, and I was able to ask a clarifying question just that I had, because I couldn't tell from the, I know we don't normally get into specific developments, but I couldn't tell from their draft map if it complemented or worked against the habitat block that we are just, that's not official yet, but that we had put in place. And so I did ask that question, and I just wanted to share that not only were they aware of the, the line that's currently in the map, but they also studied the Article 12 draft enough to know about the, they mentioned something about having like one acre that they proposed to shift, working with the guidelines, and make, move it to another portion of that connected habitat. So just hearing them talk about it was kind of just exciting to me, because it was like our Article 12 kind of in motion. So I just, I was happy to share that, that I had heard that.
Great, thanks, Monica. Any other commissioner announcements or staff report items?
Just one quick note, which is that the City Council on Monday night had a work session around the I-89 interchanges. The CCRPC and their consultant gave them an update, including adding seven new metrics based on the input that was provided by various committees and members of the public. And they're going to be continuing their work on the 19th of April. I'm going to be sending out a note to you all, as well as to the other committees tomorrow, to, if committees want to have, participate in the next stage. And then, secondly, just a little note of another action that the council did the other night, which was the members of federal Congress have been invited to put together a list of 10 community development projects from each of their districts to, to consider for a future appropriations bill. Congressman Welch reached out to each of the communities in Vermont to get candidate projects that had to be submitted by today to them. So the council on Monday night considered a number of options and decided to move forward with seeking funding to build the pedestrian boardwalk that would connect City Center Park to the Stormwater Goose Pond and to Garden Street, which staff was very excited about. This is one of the key pieces of connecting the existing neighborhoods to the future city center and all the residents in city center back to the park that we've all, that you've all invested in. So it was an exciting opportunity, and fingers crossed that it makes the list.
I suppose that is my announcement as well. So because the City Council had already taken that action, I did take the liberty of signing a support letter, signed by myself as the, the Chair of the Commission. It felt reasonable. I don't normally do that without checking with everybody, but it was kind of a short timeline just yesterday. So I'm hoping that I didn't step out of line with that support letter.
That's a great project. I've walked around there, stumbled around there.
I have too, and I must say, I accidentally walked across the wetland without, you know, there was a path there, and I know it's kind of been brought to our attention. So I think it'll be really good to, you know, have an official kind of better way to move around. Okay, any other? Monica?
Just, Paul, would you also give the update about the City Council's conversation about the timing for IZ?
Oh, yes. They had a conversation also about what they would be thinking about in terms of the completion of interim zoning, and also whether they would like to see the Article 10 and 12 work together with the rest of it or separately. I think it was mostly in preparation for your meeting next week. They didn't take any formal actions. I think that there were, they were looking for probably some feedback from, from you all about whether to advance one set first or to do it all together. I think that they were sort of interested in thinking about what the pros and cons of those two were. Again, they didn't take any vote, but my sense was that the council was interested in having interim zoning in place during the period for you to complete the PUD work and the 10 and 12. But again, no formal action on that, that, that's a future formal decision of the councils.
Okay, I think that seems like a good transition point to move into Agenda Item 4, which is the review and possible action to approve advancing LDR 2001, which is the Draft Environmental Protection Standards and the accompanying Planning Commission report. So we do have the option along with this agenda item to, and we have the materials in front of us if we are ready to warn the public hearing. I did have a conversation with Helen, kind of following that discussion that she had with the council, and she felt like it could be helpful for us to have our joint meeting and have that discussion together as kind of the joint two groups before making that choice to kind of go through the hearing process with, with this piece separate from additional pieces. So I guess I would see if the rest of the group kind of agreed with that approach to have that joint meeting first, and then make the, the decision, you know, we could do something where we, you know, have these materials ready and maybe have an agenda item at the end of the joint meeting to do the warning of a public hearing, if we feel like that's appropriate at the end of that meeting. But it, you know, just talking with Helen, it made it seem like maybe it would be, I don't know, appropriate to kind of get that feedback before warning and having a specific date set too, because I think that that's the other thing. If we choose to set a, a public hearing, we have to set that specific date. So it kind of puts us into a timeline. So, so I don't know if people agree with that. We can kind of talk about that as part of this agenda item here, kind of what the approach is. So I see Ted, and then Duncan?
So just to understand, what we would do is we would have the joint meet, you're saying have the joint meeting, and then potentially warn a public hearing, at which time, either after the public hearing or whatever, we still would have a chance to make any changes if there's something substantive that we learned, and then it would go back to the City Council. Is that, is that, that's how the process? So are we talking, okay, for, for us, potentially one meeting, which would be again, the public hearing, and our wrap-up at the end of that? Okay, good. I got it. Just want to make sure that...
So it felt like to me, you know, if we had these materials ready, you know, the, whatever, with whatever changes we make tonight, and have them as part of our packet for our joint meeting, we could make the decision even then, I think, to warn, warn the public here. So we'd, we'd lose a week essentially, but we'd gain the perspective of the joint conversation with the council. So Duncan, and then it looks like Monica?
I know we talked about it a little bit, but maybe, I guess this is a question for Paul. Paul, what are the, you know, I guess in a nutshell, what are the major pros and cons of us putting Article 10 and 12 out there on their own versus putting them out with the PUDs? I know, obviously, we got a letter from Sandy Dooley, you know, stressing very strongly to do the latter. I guess, I have some ideas of my own, but I'd like to hear from you. What, what are the major pros and cons from the city standpoint or from staff standpoint?
Well, so I guess first, let me say that if you choose to warn your public hearing on Articles 10 and 12, that doesn't mean that you can't still join it all together. You could hold a public hearing on a portion of what you're doing, and then join it with the rest of it before sending it on to councils. Let me just start with that. But in terms of pros and cons of doing it together or separately, you know, I guess briefly, I would say that pros of doing it together is that you're looking at all the pieces, and if one affects the other, then you can adjust that. You don't have to go re-modify something that you have potentially adopted three months earlier. You know, I think that that's probably the biggest pro. Another pro might be that, I think from the beginning of this, you were looking at this as being a little bit of a balance of some additional areas for conservation, some additional tools for development, and sort of having this whole package. I guess I would say pros for doing it separately are that, one, it would allow you to be complete with a big piece of this puzzle. And I know that, you know, I've heard from several commissioners that it's been challenging to sort of talk about one piece and then be on a different subject area, and then, oh, well, that affects subject area A again, and so you're hopping back and forth. Having something where the policy has been, you know, essentially determined, might make it a little bit easier to work within a smaller universe and make adjustments as needed, but to focus on a single subject area. So I guess that's probably the most, the most significant pro. Another potential pro is that, you know, there has been a lot of community feedback specifically on the environmental protection standards, and appropriately so. If that were completed and behind you, it might allow you to sort of have more focused attention and get more community feedback on the PUD side of it that is about the neighborhoods themselves. So I think those are some of the pros and cons in my view.
Yeah. And I think one piece that I maybe didn't mention was, I think that even if we don't warn an official public hearing, I do think that we should release what we have with a request for comments specific to it with a specific target date for when those, those comments would come back. So I think that would be the alternative path if we hear something different. So it was Monica, and then Michael?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I take this very seriously, the additional piece that we need to consider is I would like to honor what Paul is about to experience, which is going to be beautiful. And I feel that it, we may not be, because we will potentially be in a situation where there may not be staff available to help us make any changes even after the 4-6 meeting, rather than hold it up, it seems like being able to, if we're all comfortable with what we're seeing today for at least this first round, to release it, even if we do get comments after 4-6, we just may not be able to properly address them right away. And, and so to me, I would support proceeding. And I like what you just said, Jessica, about not necessarily announcing when the date is, but getting the information with the cover out to the public, out to the City Council as soon as possible, so people can officially see what it is. And if we need to make changes later before we actually set a date, then so be it.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, these are both quite complex pieces of, of regulation that we're dealing with. And I, we are so close on Article 12, what, 9, 10, and 12. It, I, I feel a mistake to lose our focus. We should get it done and, and then have it, have it behind us, so that we can then focus totally on, on Article 15, which is a lot of work and very complicated. I just think we, we shouldn't lose focus. We're so close. Let's, let's do what the, what the council originally asked us to do, which is finish Article 12 and 10, obviously, and then move on to our next project, the PUDs.
And you know, Michael, I actually, I completely agree with what you're saying. I think the only nuance that I wasn't completely sure of was, are we doing the, an official separate public hearing, or are we doing an official end-of-public comment date where then we would finalize it? And I think the path is a little different after that, whether we can kind of put it on for adoption, or whether it's waiting to go together. So that was the difference that I see. But I, I do agree with staying focused. Go ahead, Michael. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I it's, I I understand, and we don't have to do the 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 whole roadshow and public hearing right away. But there's an advantage in my mind to to having the public hearings on these two. Projects separately. Uh, it's hard enough for the public to participate in a virtual meeting. On what we're doing now. If they have to then focus on uh, Article 15 as well, which. Many people don't understand. Uh, I think that would be a disservice to the public. I think we. I'm not saying we should do the public hearing right away. You you made the point that we could do it sometime after the April 6th meeting. But uh, I think we should keep that in mind to separate these things, because it would be very hard to get public input if if they're all. If we do the whole thing together.
Okay, so um, I I do, so one of my goals, I think, is also to make sure we have. Kind of our draft and and we can, we can make sure we're okay with the draft that's in our packet, but. When we're, when we're ready to have it go out, to make sure there's a big enough chunk of time. For people to really be able to kind of ask questions, to um, really see what's in it, really dive into the mapping. Like I just, I want to make sure that our schedule doesn't wind up with too short of a time period for public comment. Um, you know, whether that's an official hearing or an end of public comment date, like, um, but I want to make sure it's a big enough time. So I think what we had. Tentatively threw out there was, you know, if we kind of finish our draft tonight, like, tonight, if possible. And then with that cover letter, um, like Monica said, what's going to go into the packet for next week's joint meeting? Then we kind of have that language that's kind of set that people are beginning to comment specifically on. And then if we don't make changes to that language, so it's it's set for for many weeks, like, you know, maybe. You know, May sometime. So you know, there's, there's, you know, more than a month of time. And then one of the things, and I was going to mention this under um, other business about scheduling, but it's come up a couple times, but. I I think that one of our May meetings or one of our April meetings might make sense for us to do like a big listening session. And mapping session. So I know we're going to do some of that with the, or anticipating some of that with the council specifically. Um, at our joint meeting next week, but I think that there might be some benefit to having one that's really geared towards the public. To be able to like, ask questions, like, look at different maps together. You know, have more of kind of a listening session and dialogue about about what's in the draft. Um, and I think that that's something that we could do kind of as a commission without necessarily needing a whole separate packet and. You know, Paul's staff time to do kind of a listening session, input session like that. So I guess I'd propose that that's part of our kind of uh, path moving forward. So I think that may address Roseanne's um, question in the chat about how much time does the PC. Plan to give the public before a a public hearing date or end of comment. So. That's what I would propose, you know, that it would be sometime in May that we. Um, then we have. Um, and then to that point, we got a public con from Roseanne that the listening sessions is a great idea. So. I did hear, see some nodding from the commission about, you know, maybe using some of our April. Meeting time for that. Um, Monica?
I'm having lighting issues here, sorry. But um, I I feel good about them being, going down this separate path as well, even though who knows? We might end up having our hearings very close to each other, depending on, you know, when we end up setting. The the public hearing for this. But I did take away from the city council, not definitive, but interest in when they do their. Um, hearing, that it be during interim zoning and that they do it together. So I think that if we go down separate paths. Um, to be most focused, I feel good about them. Taking a path of um, doing their public hearings together with the full um, the full IZ. I I don't know if that was an official decision they made, but it sounded like they were inclined to do that.
Great, and we can hear specifically from them next, next time. Um, any other comments before we kind of get into the content? Of the, what's in our packet?
So just to be clear, if all things go well, we might be. Complete through the public hearing process by the end of May. That's a, you know, question, either Paul or you, is that not a firm date, but is that, could that be possible?
Uh, yes. So Ted, I think if you had your hearing sometime in um, say, or mid-May, let's just depict, pick the middle. It it it, I guess the the factor that we don't know is whether you will have substantial things that you want to change at that time. You spent a lot of time on this, getting it to this point, so it's, you know, it's likely fairly sewed up, but. Things could come up and depending on the nature of them, it might be a week later that um, you've got the edits already, you might have something of substance, but.
Okay.
Most times in the past, you have um, advanced things pretty shortly after your public hearing.
Okay, great. So then that would give us, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
And then, then it would be, then then the council would have the choice of either advancing it, uh, assuming you voted it. Uh, then they could have the choice of either advancing or holding on it. And that would be their choice.
Right. And again, the public would be uh, there talking to the city council. So they again would have time to sort of vet. So then that gives us, I'm just trying to get a head around, so that would give us five months to deal with the PUDs, approximately.
Yes, um, I might, I might, I would probably take a little bit of time off that, because if the council wants to be done. Um, if they want to be in a place where the new rules are in place by the end of interim zoning, that's. Assuming council extends it, that's mid-November, they would need to have it and have warned a public hearing by that point. So, you know, let's say they got it in their first meeting in November, that would mean that you would need to have had your hearing. So, you know, think more of. You'd need to be um, ready to warn a public hearing around late September. So that gives you June, July, August, September, more like four months.
Okay, all right. It sounds doable to me.
Um, so I'm just kind of, I'm scrolling back through the comments just to make sure we haven't missed anyone. Lonnie Raven, um, you've had a comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm representing UVM tonight. And um, I just want to say, first of all, that the university really appreciates the huge amount of work that the planning commission. Has put into drafting these new provisions for the environmental protection standards. Um, and the university's been trying to follow this process over the last, you know, however many months or years that we've been doing it. Um, I do want to note that the university does not support regulations that limit the use of university-owned land. In a manner greater than the current zoning allows. So. I know I've said that and other people from the university have said that before, but I just wanted to say that again. Um, and UVM does own um, certain habitat blocks, areas that have been identified as habitat blocks. And our understanding is that um, the environmental protection standards and the PUD standards. Would al- would work together to allow property owners to retain a certain level of development rights. Including parcels containing habitat blocks and connectors. And so the university is concerned that putting the um, uh, sections 10 and 12 out. Soon, it was posted last week. We don't, we don't feel that we've had enough time to fully review and provide comments, so I'd support all the. Suggestions here about putting it out for an informal review, having public sessions. So that the public as well as UVM can have more, uh, more time to really understand what the implications are of these new. Regulations, both intended and unintended. Um, in addition. Because you have not completed the PUD standards, it's difficult to have a full understanding of what the impact on our land will be. Um, should the environmental protection standards move forward without the PUD standards. So I understand that one is. More advanced than the other one, but also understand it's hard to look at one of them by themselves when the second one might influence. What the first actually means. So it's possible the university's not alone in trying to quickly assess what the, what these intended. And unintended consequences are. Um, these are significant changes and it's difficult to give meaningful feedback at a public hearing. Before we and potentially others, as well as you, have had time to adequately review all the connections. And that might actually save you time and effort, because if you go through one part of it and then it turns out when the other part that. You have to go back to the first part and you have to warn it again. So I'm not sure that that, moving forward with the one without the other is really going to save time. So we would respectfully request that you delay the pub, the public hearing, the official public hearing for the environmental protection standards. Until you have a, at least a better idea of what the PUD standards are. And that will give everybody, including yourselves. Um, more complete information and ability to review everything. So that's, that's basically, we understand the pressure you're under to get things done. Um, but we also feel that it's appropriate, because these are such big changes, to really um, have, bring everyone, the public and the university along. With this. Thank you.
Great, thanks Lonnie. Um, Ted, you had your hand up?
Isn't, well, I guess I had a question. Uh, Paul, isn't most of the um, UVM land agricultural? And we wouldn't really be making any changes with regard to the UVM's agricultural land, unless they.
There, it's, it's, UVM is a pretty signi- large landowner, Ted, so I guess I'd say it's, it's a mix. There are some forested areas, um, it, as identified in the habitat blocks in. Uh, on the wheelock parcel, which is the uh, south side of Swiss Street, sort of where the ropes course is. And where the the bike path kind of goes through the woods there. There's a portion on the north side. Sort of as, as Swiss Street goes down the hill, sorry, Spear Street goes down the hill towards the interstate. And uh, there's a portion over by Patchen Road. Uh, back on the, on the northern end of the city. Those are three that that come to mind, and I think there might be a habitat connector on another parcel that is. On the edge of another parcel of UVMs, but there's a number of properties that are either agricultural. Like the Hork Farm or the Miller Farm, or that um, are currently zoned residential. There's, there's a handful of those. So it's, it's a really pretty mixed bag.
Thanks.
Anything else on kind of this? I'd like to get into the content of um, what's in the, um, Sandy? You can go ahead.
I just wanted to get a clarification from what Paul just said. Um, my reading of Articles 10 and 12. Is that um, the habitat blocks, et cetera, would apply to all land in the city. Including the land owned by UVM if they went forward as currently written. Now, what I want to know is, is that. Is my understanding correct? I just want to know what's what there.
Uh, yes, so um, Sandy, to to answer your question, the. Uh, Articles 10 and 12 are neutral to property ownership. So they are, they are um, where the resources lie. There are certain state law exemptions, like, for example, um. Uh, silvicultural practices in Vermont, um, managed forest. Forestry is something that is exempt from local regulation, but that isn't about any landowner. Um, so. Um, I think that answers your question, but let me know if it didn't.
It looks like, um.
He didn't answer my question from my perspective. The question, for example, um, the pieces that include. As the maps now show habitat blocks on UVM land, would that apply? If Articles, would those blocks apply to that la- that UVM land? If 10 and 12 go forward as currently written? Yes or no? You can take all the words you want.
No, no, so I think the answer is yes, except where, anywhere under state law. Um, there is an exemption beyond, I mean, our local authority.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, so let's move into our memo here. So we have a um. New draft with the edits that we had brought up during the last few meetings included in our packet, the clean version. Um, did anybody see anything in there that was unexpected or um, maybe it wasn't what we had. Talked about. Um, in the packet, Paul did put a list of specific items that were updated since last week's version. Okay, so, uh, Michael?
Yeah, I had a question going, going into the draft about. 12.03 wetland protection standards and the restricted infrastructure associated with that. Isn't that a duplication of what we have in 12.10, which is. Also called restricted, restricted. Infrastructure encroachment. It seems like we're doing the same thing twice. I might be wrong, but. That's a question.
Yeah, I thought the wetland one was a little more restrictive, is what.
Uh, so Michael, to to answer your question, um, you are correct that it is in uh, under restricted infrastructure encroachment. However, there are two supplemental requirements that apply in the case of a wetland from 10 point. From 12.03. So you have to meet everything from the section on restricted infrastructure. And then additionally, these two um, things that are specific to wetlands. And I think it's that the roadway has to be. Uh, no more than X feet wide, um, if it is allowed, and something else. So think of it as supplemental, not, not duplicative.
Any other questions or unexpected items?
Along with that night I raised this last time with regard to the 12.10. Yeah, I continue to really agonize uh, over encroachment. You know, we have criteria, but you put a road, and I still think that's a negative on an environmental standpoint. You know, it's uh. One of the, you know, for the purpose of crossing a natural resource area to gain access to land on the opposite side of the area. You know, so I um. You know, I I just can't support that section. So it's just a, a lone voice in the, in the wilderness, but. Just my, my opinion. I I don't, you know, I still, uh, it still sticks in my craw, the uh, the road that goes across the Great Swamp. I mean, that is an abomination. And I just sort of envisioned more, again, going back to these east-west roads. If we have no provisions or we're loosey-goosey, uh, deferring to the DRB in things like this. I think we'll have numerous east-west roads that maybe we don't want. So that's just my opinion.
Um, Paul, just to.
Um, just to, uh, just to follow up to to Ted's point, um, the, and and I think um. Lonnie had made a comment earlier also that I would, I understand the prioritization of putting. The street, the Swiss Street extension um, as a short-term discussion. But I would encourage the commission, as you think about the next 12 months or so, to really look at. It, taking a look at the official map as a whole. Because that is the driver of a number of connections. And so, you know, for example, the one that Ted you spoke about. That was on the official map at the time. And so the, whether the applicant wanted to do it or whether the DRB wanted to do it. That was what the rule said was the policy of the city. Um, and so that's a very powerful tool. And and brings with it um, important decisions that can be made in advance. So I would encourage, you know, uh, short, as as soon as we can find time to do it, to prioritize taking a look at that map and and. What the city's priorities are.
Michael?
Yes, I've just gone back to 12, 10 here. And I seem, I, I echo. Ted's concerns about these, these crossings over. Over resources that are regulated by, by, by Article 10, 12 rather. But I see, I thought we had more criteria that, that an applicant had to try first before they did anything like this. Like, see if they can get access to their property through, with a neighbor. Or, or, you know, some other means rather than, than building a road. Across one of the resources that we've tried to protect in Article 12. Am I wrong that there were more of those?
No, you're right, Michael. So Paul's just shared his screen to show it up there. So it looks like that 2B is what you're talking about there. Alternative accesses through adjacent properties have been considered. You know, as well as the other ones listed there. So, so you, you are right that, that, you know, we put that in there. And you're, you're on mute, Michael. I don't know if you were still.
Is, is, is this what's on the screen now in Article 12.10? I didn't see.
It's under the D, the E standards. So E says that all restricted, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, things, things were reorganized slightly. Because based on the guidance that you had given us back in January, February about. The, the sort of specific instance of. Stormwater restoration projects to, to sort of separate out what had to meet these standards and which ones can move forward. So that's why it's a little bit reorganized from what you had previously seen, but it is in 1210.
Okay, so we're going to come back to address the concerns that, that Ted has voiced and that I feel the same way about.
We. Can, Monica?
I just, I, I, I hear you guys, but I thought that we agreed in our previous meeting that we were going to keep it. As, keep the regs as they are for this first round of public comment, which is going to be significant, we know. So I think that, that, I, you know, I think that the concerns need to continue to be there. But I thought that in our last, I can't even keep track of which meeting, we had that discussion and made the motion to continue it. For this, for this phase. And I, I was going to ask separate from that, sorry, I don't mean to change subject. But I just, can we just make sure we spend ample time on this remaining subject about the SEQ natural resource protection boundaries? Cause I was. Whether we're shifting the NRP, that, that's something we need to decide with this package, Paul, or was that?
It is. So that was what came up at our last meeting, the question of whether or not there were any changes to the NRP included or not. And so I think you would ask Monica for some pros and cons of including it now. It's what's in the packet. That was like a big piece that we hadn't. Made a decision on. So we can, we can talk about that.
The.
Michael?
Yeah, the map that we, that's in the, in that part of the package. This map is very, very. Large scale. It's very hard to tell exactly what's going on here. And it would be difficult to compare what, what's in NRP now and what's in NRP. That proposed, I mean. The, the, the color coding and the lines are, are useful, but they don't give us much detail. I wondered. If we could see that on the largest, on a more detailed map. Proposed versus current overlaid on one another or, or point out the differences are. I see one area down in the lower, the lower left corner that's, appears to be. An addition because it's in. Purple. I don't know if that's, that's what that means. And then on, on the next page, I would, I read all the notes about considerations and implications and. I'm having a hard time understanding what, what it all means.
Monica, you want to go ahead?
And just to, to that, like, I think the piece of it that seems, wherever it is on a map. The piece that seems to be the, the most clarifying to me as I looked at this was the point that talked about. In terms of the habitat, habitat block exchange. That the biggest difference is that if a, if a portion of a habitat block is not in the NRP. It still allows some flexibility for the developer to shift an acre from this part over to this part. But once the habitat block is designated as NRP, you can't do that. Right? And if that's the case, I wonder if for right now, because there are, we know that there's going to be other zoning changes that we're going to be asked to look at. After IZ. For right now, doesn't it make sense to not change the NRP? And let these habitat blocks be established and have some time to look at. How significant that shifting adjustment is. You know, we just saw our first development proposal come through using, you know. Using the, the draft Article 12 concept anyway. And even from within that, we saw that a shift of the habitat block was used. So that may be an important tool that we just won't know yet. So to me, it seems waiting on making the NRP change could be beneficial. Is that, am I reading that right, Paul?
Yes, that is correct, Monica. I'd say that that's the most significant. That's one of the two most significant pieces. I think that the other one is. Whether a piece of land is or isn't in the NRP will have an effect, will, will be related later to. How it works in a planned unit of development. And so. The traditional neighborhood must exclude any land that's in the NRP. And the conservation PUD also would need to exclude any land from the NRP. And so when you're thinking about your 70% conservation, it is of the land that's not in the NRP. Now, of course, that's, you haven't made your final decisions on those things, but that's the, the current thinking on it. So there, there are implications later down the road for that.
Duncan?
Yeah, I, I had a good conversation with Paul yesterday. He was nice enough to try to explain this to me. But the, the, the net result I got from the conversation I had with Paul. My view, I guess, is similar to what Monica said. I, I think that. By, by put, by, by throwing that, those habitat blocks into the NRP, we, we really limit our, our options. The land is already protected as habitat block. But we eliminate the ability to swap it or to have it counted towards the PVD, you know, the buildable area. So I guess I would agree with what Monica said. I, I would prefer to wait on, you know, expanding the NRP boundaries. We know that we protected the land as habitat block. And, and see, you know, maybe we address it in the next round of LDR stuff. It's also, I mean, if you look at the map, if I'm wrong, it's not a huge, well, I mean. The, the, the South Village part is bigger, but the other two pieces I don't think are that. That much. But I could be wrong, but that's, I, I guess I would agree with what Monica said.
To, to hold off.
Yeah, I think that the land, it is protected. As a habitat block, but by, by turning it into NRP, we lose a little flexibility there. And, and to see, you know, how's this going to work? And I think Monica has a great point. Already we have a landowner who wants to use one of the, the swap tools.
I guess, any other comments on this? I know that. It, it's been shown in our kind of mapping all along, but we hadn't really had a big discussion. Michael?
Yeah, I was just wondering what, what sort of flexibility did you, did you Duncan and maybe Monica have in mind? You know, can you elaborate on that a bit?
I'm, I'm not going to remember the LDR number, but the, the stipulation that allows. A portion of a habitat block to be shifted to, as long as it's still contained within the habitat block, that a portion can be moved. You know, to another area. So an acre can be taken out on the northwest corner of something and moved slightly farther south. As long as it's still a portion of the habitat connected to the primary habitat block. And that's, I think, what this landowner was doing as an example.
If we put in the NRP, you cannot do that.
I guess I would, I would prefer to hold off just because I, over the course of the meeting where we mapped these out. You know, we, we changed our approach. So we didn't take the same approach across all of the locations. You can kind of see that where the blue outline on the screen right now kind of goes outside of the orange. There's some spots that are still white, like those are the areas where we. Kind of had changed our approach through the meeting to not expand the NRP, you know, in the case Paul's zooming into one of these spots and. It feels like maybe we weren't consistent with this and it feels a little premature, I guess. You know, we hadn't talked about this in the last many meetings when we were kind of contemplating all the different changes. To environmental protection standards. And I know we have some other kind of zoning specific changes that we. You know, are contemplating as part of the, the kind of next phase of our work, the, the PUD part. So it feels like this zoning change might fit better, you know, if we still feel like we want to do it. Kind of when we're advertising for zoning changes, because we're, we're really advertising right now for. I guess what I see as environmental protection changes, which it feels a little different to me in how we talk about it and. How it might be perceived. Monica?
Well, and just a last point also that as part of IZ, there was a TDR committee. The TDR committee report was submitted July 31st of 2019 and it has not been. Reassessed because of COVID and everything else. So it doesn't seem right to add to the NRP when the TDR committee. You know, recommendations have not been able to be considered. So just another reason to hold off on adding to NRP, I think, so.
Yeah, good point. Michael?
Yes, I, I had a question of, for clarification from Paul about South Village. He says, the only exception was where modifications to the SEQ NRP. Were intended to align with the master plan. Surely it would have, why wouldn't it have been done the other way around? You know, we had the NRP, why wouldn't the master plan comply with the NRP?
Right, good, good question, Michael. So just to go back in time a little bit. The South Village Master Plan was reviewed and approved prior to the existence of any of the current zoning. It was under the, the, the zoning that was in place from 1992 to 2006. And so everything took place then. The NRP came in afterwards and generally aligned with where development had already been approved and not throughout the city. And so that's, you know, some of the, the sort of zigs and zags of the NRP. But for whatever reason, not all of South Village was marked as it's been approved. And so what this really was, was a true up to what is already approved and already under construction. So that, you know, there, there, there isn't, there aren't house lots that are in the middle of the NRP. It does not expand their ability to build anything beyond where they've already been fully approved. So that's, that's, that's what that one would be.
Do we need a motion to decide to keep, to not change the NRP zone right now? Or, or do we just? Agree to that and move on?
I think we would need a motion to include it because it's not included right now. So, so if somebody wants to include it, then I think we would need to take action on that.
But if we're saying, don't change the NRP line now and wait until we deal with other zoning changes later, we don't need a motion?
Why, I guess we could have a motion either direction. Yeah.
Motion that we, that we keep the NRP zoning line intact as it is currently. Until a later stage when we look at other zoning considerations.
Okay, any discussion about this motion? Okay, all in favor of holding off or addressing it later? Or no change, I guess, is I. Okay, I am seeing hands up for all of us, so that was unanimous. Thank you very much. And there are a couple of questions in the chat about how the habitat block exchange might work. We have some specifics in the language. I don't want to get into a big discussion that about that tonight. But we will have a bigger discussion about that at our kind of upcoming listening sessions where we can really get into the details, if that's okay. Okay, so next thing is, in the packet is the, the report. That goes along with the, the changes. So I. Really liked it. Okay, does any, so I guess, does anyone have any like questions or comments or feel like something should be addressed differently? In kind of a report that would go along with, with the changes. Duncan?
I just had a question for clarification on page three. Background and context of proposed regulations. The first paragraph, the 2020 habitat block assessment and ranking, is that the Arrowwood report?
It is, yes. I thought that, I, I was trying to not be too wordy in this whole thing, but I thought that it would be useful to. For the public to be able to see the breadcrumbs back to that, if it would be helpful. If it wasn't plainly obvious that that was Arrowwood, then I'm happy to add the word Arrowwood into it so that it's easy for people to, to draw the connection. I just, we, we usually don't specifically list a consultant's name. But if that's the way that people find it more easily, then, then that's the whole purpose of it. So. I'm happy to do that. My, my other note that I just wanted to say quickly is that. Some pieces of this would be part of the public outreach, including that table. But this doesn't have to be the only manner in which you describe what's in here. You could have more text or less text as you choose for your public outreach. So I just want to say this, this has a specific purpose to meet the state law of. Of giving a brief summary and answers to the three questions under the state law there.
Monica, did you have something?
I, yeah, I had, I sent a, a note to Paul and Jessica and I, I don't know what you guys think about it. It's not sure if it's appropriate here, but I, I guess it would fit into the background and context of the proposed regulations section. And the idea was, these are not the right words, but the concept is, one of the big reasons we're doing this is because the comp plan has a fuzzy map. And we're basically clarifying that by having very clear, expanded. Environmental protections, which as we saw in our last meeting, when overlapped, completely complement what was happening there. And to, to basically say that as part of our, what our part of our mission was. But also just to have it in words here so that people can have this conversation. To say that while we're clearly identifying the important resources to protect. We are also therefore clarifying the buildable lands. That are acceptable to build on. And I understand that that's a controversial. Statement, but I feel like we kind of need to say that so that the public is very clear on what is, is happening. is happening within this. And I feel like we would get a lot of information from the community in response to something like that. So it was a thought to kind of put into that background area.
I'm not opposed to that, but I guess there's two things that come to mind. One is about partway through page three. We have a statement in here that I think is really important, that the draft amendments are proposed to function as one of a collection of tools to support natural resource conservation and thoughtful development in the community to support the comprehensive plan because I guess, I guess what I think of is, you know, we have the civic space and open space standards that would then be applied in the development areas. So I want to make sure we're not like misleading people to say that every inch of what's not in here is going to be developed because I don't think that's true. And, you know, we've talked about the conservation PUDs where there would be kind of additional additional land that would be kind of in a conservation state as through those conservation PUDs. So you know, I know that these are kind of setting some boundaries on certain resources, but I don't think it's the only tool. So I don't know if it's true that we would say that the things that aren't covered here aren't covered in these maps would therefore automatically be developed. So I want to make sure we're not misreading.
And that's, and I'm glad that you're saying that because you're absolutely right. I think what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to send here is the message of what the work that we are doing within this adds so much protection for very important resources, so much so that hopefully, when anyone does want to develop something, they have a very clear path. They will very clearly know what needs to be protected. And so their initial rounds should be respecting that and it should make for a smoother development process. It seems like right now no development process is smooth and that the goal of this is to make things more clear so that what needs to be protected is protected. So I don't know, that was the notion.
Duncan, did you want to?
Monica, it does kind of in the last page six, those little bullet points. The last one, it does kind of address the proposed regulations are intended to provide greater clarity and certainty for all parties involved in land development. I mean, that does provide some of the language you were talking about.
Yeah, I don't know if there's another piece that you were trying to get at that wasn't covered by kind of those ideas. So I picture having kind of this document and then I also picture having some kind of news, like additional outreach as well, like I want to do an article for the other paper and for the city newsletter. And, you know, I picture them being maybe a little, a little less formal. This is kind of a formal report that needs to meet very specific state guidelines for a warning. So we will also have some room for kind of additional clarification as well. Did you want to respond to what I just said?
No, go ahead, Michael. I've got a related question, but it's afterwards.
Yes, I'm looking at the paragraph near the bottom of page three, which says that they've been considered by the planning commission for the consistency with the text goals and objectives of their comprehensive plan. We should be careful about that statement because, as you know, I had an objection to the the change in 9.06 B3, which is in the comprehensive plan and what we're doing now isn't really consistent with that. So we should be careful about that statement.
I think Paul Ingles raised the point a meeting or two ago, but, you know, we know what we put in, but does the public know what we've taken out? So I think it might be good to somehow make sure that we're very clear if there's any things that we have taken out. Because I think there's still a lot of confusion, maybe even by some commissioners, exactly what's going on in this document. You know, I know it's what's in, but I'm not exactly sure exactly what's out. So I think that'd be very helpful, just one pager.
In plain language.
So I guess my related question is, I was wondering to what extent you would be interested, not necessarily in this report, but in general, having a brief discussion on this in plain English on sort of the genesis and what each of the different categories of the environmental protection standards do. So, you know, you've got the one little line inside the table, but that's the only place where it's broken down. And, you know, I like the table because it's one page, but for somebody looking for more than that, but less than trying to understand legalese, it's, I was wondering to what extent you'd be interested in sort of like a, you know, like a third of a page or half a page discussion about, you know, here's, here's what a habitat block is. It's mapped by the city as opposed to being something that can be field delineated. The history of it is that it came from Arrowood and here's the way in which land can or cannot be moved around a little bit. And then the same thing for steep slopes and the same thing for other ones. I want to be careful that it's not trying to replace the text itself. The text is the text. And so it's not additional guidance to it. It's just maybe a little bit of explanation in layperson's terms. But I didn't want to go and write that if you didn't want to have it.
Yeah. I think it sounds like a great idea. Michael?
Well, I don't think we, did we respond to Ted's suggestion about a simple document of pluses and minuses that the public can understand, pluses and minuses and and kind of quantification of each, you know, we did this, which, which reduced the protection in this area by two acres, but we did this, which increased the protection in this area by six acres, you know, so that the public of our pluses and minuses and what we've been doing, because I don't think it will be easy for them to understand.
Can I add to that or? I mean, I do think, I don't know if getting into like exact mathematics of this acre, that acre, but I do think that making a comment that we've made this dramatic change to Article nine for X, Y, and Z reasons, and it's now here, like and explain that. I think that that's a very fair thing to state here, and that can be, again, discussed in public comment. So I like, if that's, I think that's what I understood Ted's suggestion to be. And I think that that makes a lot of sense. I also wanted to separate, sorry that I'm jumping, but I also wanted to point out very importantly that on page, on a comp plan, I take Michael's point about the comp plan comparison, but I also wanted to point out Strategy 138 on 339, Section 3-39, is this the creating the stepping stones of pockets of wildlife. I mean, that is the primary thing that we've done with these habitat blocks. And it said so nicely in this 138 that I would recommend including that. Because we did it.
Yeah, that's a good point, Monica. Okay, it does sound like we need a little description of the Chapter nine change. And then there was two things in the table that jumped out at me. One was in the river corridor summary, did anybody, did that sentence make sense to everybody? Standards combined for stream buffer and river corridors with applicable area covering the prior for both. I guess that's the piece with applicable area covering the prior for both. I I wasn't sure what the prior was. Is that the stream buffer? Paul, you're on mute.
I'll try to rework that. What I was trying to say was the physical geography that is covered by the new river corridors includes everything that was in the stream buffer and everything that was in the river corridor, whichever is larger.
Oh, okay.
But I was trying to figure out how to say it in six words or less.
It does make sense. I just got confused.
Well, we're recording this, Paul, so you can go back and look at what you just said and just put that there.
Okay, so and then I think the other thing in the table, if you scroll down to the Level 2, 500-year floodplain B1, I think over in the how the boundary is established, I don't think it should say State River Corridor. I think it should say FEMA flood insurance maps. Because isn't that?
You're correct. You're correct. Thank you.
In the Winuski River, there is actually a mapped 500-year floodplain, and that's what we were referring to.
You're correct. Thank you for that catch.
I'm sure it comes from FEMA.
Yeah, FEMA. FEMA were available essentially, so. Anything else in the report? So we have a few suggested changes. Then I guess we get back to kind of what our approach is tonight. Are we, I think what I got out of the first part of this discussion was that we were going to have these items included in the packet for the joint council meeting with the possibility of us warning a public hearing kind of at the end of that meeting, if that is kind of the joint kind of path we choose to go towards, is that?
Could you go just list those, list what's in the package, what's going to be in the package, apart from the memo that we've just discussed in our end to go? What else?
This is a great point. So we're kind of, I believe we're moving into the next agenda item, which is perfect, Michael. So preparation for our joint meeting. So I guess I, this is up for debate and addition and planning. But I guess I pictured the, this report, like the official kind of public warning, public hearing warning report, the the revised standards as we have in our packet for tonight. And then I think we want to make sure that the mapping is available to people ahead of time. One thing that Helen had specifically brought up when I talked to her was that sometimes the maps on the screen are very hard to see. So it might be nice to provide in the packet, some kind of maps that people had ahead of time. Paul?
So on that, I have an update today, which is that I have ready now the interactive map showing the existing natural resource protection standards and the future environmental protection standards, where you can turn each layer on and off. They're categorized by hazard level one, level two, and per, I can't remember whose specific request, but you can type in your address and it can go straight to your property to look at it. So I've asked Monica in the next couple of days to do, to be our beta tester so that she can find all the holes in it, but that will be available. Is that what you're thinking of? Or are you thinking about sort of sections of a PDF map?
Well, you know, we had, when we talked about this, I think it was last week, we had two kind of map serieses. We had kind of the interactive map with all the different resources and the property lines, but then you also had the other series of maps. It was more like a map presentation where we walked through and had the overlay with the comprehensive plan fuzzy map and the comprehensive plan resource maps. That seems like an important piece of the discussion.
I have those also ready to go, basically in an email to hit send. I was just waiting for you to decide what you want to do with the NRP. So that will be, we'll be able to send those slideshows to you and the council also, all cleaned up.
Okay, so I guess there would be the two series of maps. Duncan?
The map that we got at the end of our packet from a couple of weeks ago, is that, is it an updated version of that you're talking about?
Yes, it's a cleaned up version. That was sort of the in progress and now it's been cleaned up so that it's designed to be user friendly to people who aren't spending dozens of hours a month working on it like yourselves.
I think that would be fantastic because that was very very illuminating to see all that stuff. It was really good.
Okay, Michael and then Monica?
When you said revised draft standards, are you talking about all of those that are in tonight's packet? In other words, Article 12, Article nine, Article 10, Article 15, or just the environmental protection ones which were, which basically nine, 10, and 12?
Just the hazards level one, level two resources as compared with what was in there previously, which was surface water protection standards, wetlands, floodplains. So it's doing that side by side.
In our package, we have the draft, actual draft language for Article 15, Article 12. So I'm not sure which it is that we're.
You guys are talking about two different things. Paul's talking about mapping and Michael's talking about LDR language, right?
I'm talking about the revised standards draft, yes.
Yeah, the LDR standards. Yeah, so that would be the package that we had last week that included Article two, where there were new definitions. Article nine, which will show that certain things aren't included.
Sorry, yes. So the, I guess what I would say is the package that you have is founded in Article 10 and 12, but there are related items throughout. So that together is what we've been calling, or I've been calling LDR 20-01, which is environmental protection and related standards. So yes, there are elements from Article nine in 9.06, from Article 15, from definitions, from Appendix E submission. So it's a little, little related pieces. So it's that together.
Okay, so I divert. So to get back to mapping, the Tidman County Regional Planning Commission map that was prepared with or for South Burlington or the draft for zoning purposes, the format of that map is a lot easier, a lot friendly, user friendly than some of the recent maps that you've presented. And I was wondering what is, what is the difference in in the formatting of those maps? That map is so easy to move from layer to layer and easy to see detail when you zoom in, which isn't the case with all the maps that we've been looking at in recent meetings.
Thanks, Michael. I guess that the simplest answer is what you've seen in your packets in the last couple of meetings were a little bit more of the back of the house version of it, where I was giving it to you literally the second I was getting it from Melanie, as opposed to giving her the chance to make it look tidy and clean. And so that's what Monica is going to be looking at tomorrow of whether it's tidy and clean enough. So that's basically you're seeing, you're seeing it in the much more raw form. And I'm not sure Melanie even knew that I was sharing it with you, but I was wanting to get the information out to you as quickly as possible.
Okay, Monica?
So I was going to ask if when this stuff is released, can you give it a dedicated page on the city's website with nothing else on it? But this package, and then it would allow you to almost take your memo, the report, and more specifically put in links to the LDRs where that, to what the report is referring to. It could be much easier, I think, for people to navigate. We'll have our traditional pack, but if you can give it that dedicated page.
That's a great idea. And that would also blend really nicely with the use of the city newsletter because then you can click on something, it brings you to. Because then you can click on something, it brings you to the page. So yes, great idea. We'll, we'll do that.
Other, so some, the other thing, other than the things we just talked about that I think would be good to go in the, the packet for next meeting is some at least talking points and Han and I had done a little bit of brainstorming and came up with this list that I had Paul include in our packet here and you know, it was kind of a, a general maybe agenda path for our discussion, but I think that this this is really up to us to, to refine. And you know, if there's specifics that we want to make sure are brought up, we can you know, prepare for that ahead of time. So we make sure to touch on different things and ask the right questions. So you know, I know that, so first up on that list is really talking through the details and the mapping related to this, this topic. But and, and you know, getting, trying to get some council feedback. But I do think there are some questions about how this relates to the rest of the work. And I wanted to make sure that the council wasn't totally working in a a vacuum. So I thought that then at least an overview of the PUD work. I would say out a couple of things just to have an idea as to how that fits in with the bigger plan. And then getting into some specific questions about kind of the, the city's, city's desires. I know it's a couple of different things that have come up about what is the city want to see in the southeast quadrant specifically? You know, we've heard some questions about the east west road connections that came up. I think it makes sense to, to mention during this meeting that that's a conversation we're going to have in the, the short term and then to kind of talk about the idea of a targeted comprehensive plan update as well. So this was just an, a kind of first thought on how the meeting might go. So if people have input or other specific questions we want to bring up or, or suggestions on kind of how to present this, I think that would be helpful. Monica, you can go.
So the, I just was going to say in your second bullet, I love that you're bringing up the concept of minimum densities. And I think it makes sense there to say, and the concept of maximum densities. And just to put it out there, you know, there might, it might be that in certain areas of the city, they do want to have certain maximum densities. And I think that's just what we need to have some clarity on. And then the other thing was in the ah crap, lost it. It'll come back.
Paul?
Um, just a thought, but I, I think, I think you covered to a certain extent in your bullet two and bullet three, Jessica, around the PUDs and also about the southeast quadrant. But you know, I, I think that there's been a lot of discussion that's been had around sort of a combination of a few factors of the traditional neighborhood and the compact nature of them, the conservation PUD, which is a, which is a different tool and which you, there's been some really good debate amongst the commission about should they both be allowed in some areas? Should it be one or the other? And then in terms of the, the last comment that Monica made about sort of minimums and maximum densities. Currently, essentially the southeast quadrant as a whole has a maximum density. And that could be retained as a, as a total maximum through the TDR program. And is, is that the objective? But it could be very compact development in some areas? Or would you want to target some areas to have more and less within the southeast quadrant, things like that? I guess, you know, I, I sense that the council and you have wrestled with the, these kinds of questions. And so I guess I'd encourage that those be be addressed. And I know that one of the reasons that you went into the PUDs to begin with was to deal with this question of the sort of nine lot subdivisions that were land consumptive, but not necessarily achieving any conservation goals. And so, you know, that's, you know, just thinking about all those things together, I guess, would be a thought. And, and though I say southeast quadrant, some of these things apply to some other parcels around the city also. So just a couple of thoughts for you.
Ted?
So it really is not getting into huge detail, I assume with the PUDs. It really is just a real quick tour of the concepts of several of them, right? I mean, we can really, we could really get into it at a, at a meeting, so.
Well, I guess, you know, I, I think you're right, Ted. There's probably more on this list of bullet points than we're going to be able to get feedback on. You know, I did mention to Helen that, you know, when we were kind of planning the idea of this joint meeting that some of these topics might require kind of a follow up. Like, I don't know that the council is going to be ready to weigh in as a group on you know, some of these concepts, but it feels like at least giving the overview and some of the questions we're wrestling with is really important before anybody's making a firm decision on anything. Cause you know, like Paul said, like saying that only conservation PUDs are allowed in certain areas of the city, that, that's a big policy change that, you know, we mentioned as a possibility, but you know, it'd be nice to have feedback on some of these things. Duncan?
Yeah, on, on the density issue, I think it would definitely be very helpful to get some feedback from the council. I know we've wrestled with that in terms of understanding how it works. And how it could work on some of the PUD properties and what the ramifications would be in terms of how dense the development would be in the southeast quadrant. Which I, I think would come as a surprise to some people. So I would certainly like to at least pose that question to them. And, you know, yeah, and again, they may, they may not, don't expect them to answer it right away, but certainly have them maybe thinking about that too. What does the city want to see there?
Right, and.
And I guess I would, I would encourage you to think about the tool and the applicability of the tool as being too related, but not necessarily the same answer. So it may be that there's an area that, that, that the traditional neighborhood is a great tool, but not in this one area. Or maybe the tool itself is not appropriate anywhere in the city, but to think not just, it's, it's not just sort of an all or nothing proposition. But I think that that's the kind of discussion that would be really helpful as to what are your goals in these different areas and to Ted's point of how detailed, hopefully there can be a high enough level discussion that this sort of very basics of what these PUD types are, are enough to sort of foster the, the, the big policy level discussion. And you know, the, the width of a building lot can be sort of a planning commission discussion later.
Yeah, I think, you know, Ted, also to your point, although it should only maybe be kind of an overview of the PUD stuff, I think one piece that feels like it's still confusing to many different people is how, how those densities might apply in the southeast quadrant specifically. You know, I know that when we looked at that mapping, you could come up with a number of like 16 units an acre, but you know, you, you couldn't increase the total number of units in the southeast quadrant using that tool, like the total number was still capped. And I, I think maybe just we can work with Paul to make sure we're articulating that clearly. You know, so we're, we're not misrepresenting kind of how those tools work too, so. Monica?
I remember the one, and I have basically four suggestions. So the, the one was to include a review of the current zoning map. Like kind of start there and let's not assume that the council is, you know, up to, or you know, remembering, you know, for example, that in the SEQ for however long there has been this village residential density. So pointing out what, what is on the current zoning map. And then the three other things to think about are, I, I think that the whole buildable concept in general kind of needs its own. I know it's kind of getting into some of the weeds, but it's a big shift and we need to make sure that they really understand what it means. And I think that giving some example points that might be kind of detail oriented, but can lead us into a constructive conversation. For example, are there parts of the city where we should be requiring a certain percent of single family homes or not? You know, that's a pretty big policy. Like, let's put it out there and have that conversation. And I feel like we need to make those questions very clear for us to then be able to get back. And it will lead to other bits of clarity. We don't need to ask every clarifying question. Another example question might be about conservation and the conservation PUDs. Because what the conservation PUD is going to do is going to allow conservation, but that conservation might be out of the NRP. And conceptually, does everybody understand that? And conservation means forever? Or do we want to talk about, do we have a definition of a do we, how do we define conserve? Is it a permanent conservation? I mean, those are some pretty big bullets that can help us understand, I think, other things.
Other questions people have that we want to make sure we're addressing or materials we want to make sure to have in place, Paul Engels and then Duncan?
I'd still like to see some hard numbers. I think we've been told that there are 2,000 units in the southeast quadrant. And there's a build out of possible 3,800 maximum. And that there are 700 buildable acres in the southeast quadrant. Are these numbers that ring bells with anyone?
The first two are about right, Paul. I'd have to think about that third one. But that your, your numbers are in the ballpark for the first two, yeah.
And the same with, you know, acres that we're conserving. I mean, how many acres are currently conserved? How many acres will be conserved, served after the changes we're making or made? Those are the kinds of things I'd like to see. Especially in our discussion with the council.
I'll see what I can do with that. It is on the, our, our help with the regional planning commission's list, but I've been prioritizing or getting the mapping to be correct first. And so it's just one of those, it's the same person doing three or four things. So I, I'm, it's on our list to try to get that as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Duncan, you and your hand up?
I just, I just wanted to clarify something Monica said. Monica, you were talking about building type, right? You asking about, explain the council building type as opposed to?
Yes, the PUD, yes, 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 thank you.
Okay. I think that's more than enough for one evening of discussion. So I
Add one more, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Monica.
I, I, I know that there's a lot of disagreement with my, with this notion. Not with the PC, but with other people I've talked to. But I, I still feel that there are things that the city council could be made aware of that they could be doing that are outside of our purview or that are just not on our list. And had COVID not happened, I feel like we would have made a lot of progress across the board, but we just simply haven't. And some of those things, for example, are so that some of the suggestions that staff had for inclusionary offsets and some of the, the, creating the TDR marketplace. And I know that we can't do it right now. I understand that, but I would like to just, it would be nice to remind the city council that there are other things so that they can manage their time as they see fit. I mean, we're, we're doing everything we can with what we're charged with. The reality is there are some people and with staff down, with COVID, we lost a city planner. There's grant money. I mean, I think that they should be able to bring in a temp, you know, planning person if they need to, to help out with some of this stuff. And if there's something that we can do to remind them of those things and give them a chance to talk about it. And if they may say no, but that's, if there's something that we can highlight as by the way, next, you know, while, until we see you again, here are other things that you can contemplate while we are not thinking about it because we can't.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good point, Monica. You know, there's been a lot of reports done and not all of those tasks identified were on our plate, so. I don't know how we create like a comprehensive list of that, but maybe we can at least introduce the topic of you know, there's all these reports that have been done with the IZ committees and, and not all of them are things we're working on. And you know, maybe that's like kind of a good thing to point out. And you know, we can give them a really good overview of all the things we are currently working on in this meeting to kind of clue them into where we are at. Sandy, is this about this item here?
It's very short. I, I can imagine that that process would need the support of the city manager. So this might be something that the new city manager would want to sink her teeth into when she comes. Because I think it's difficult to add things to, to Kevin's plate at this point in time. Just, just a comment.
Yeah, it's a good.
Suggestion.
Yeah, good point. But it is a great point, Monica, you know, to say that there are only things that we're not working on.
Well, and what's the way that Sandy just catched that as well. It's almost like let us help bridge this gap because I'm sure Kevin also is winding up things and there may not be things that are on the top of his mind. So let us help in some way summarize to bridge that so that as the new person comes in, she does have some kind of list, you know, does the city council want to purchase some of the lots that are on the open space report that, you know, we're only addressing a portion of with our things, so.
Okay. Anything else people want to see on the agenda or, or materials? Okay, I know that Helen did email all of us about the timing. There were some city conflicts kind of later in the evening on April 6th. So I think she was circulating the idea of having the meeting earlier, like the five to seven ish range. I haven't heard a definitive answer on that. She was kind of coordinating that scheduling, but it, it sounded like that was working for a lot of people so far.
Jessica, if we do the, if we have it earlier, would we be willing to stay a little bit after as a planning commission, just ourselves? And at least kind of walk through a summary of what we all heard and.
I have two different thoughts on that. One is maybe that's what we do for our first regular April meeting. It's within a day or two of Paul's baby's due date, so we may not have kind of a lot of staff support potentially for that meeting. But if we did keep our April, it would be April 13th, which is our regular meeting date. If we did keep that, maybe that's when we could do kind of a debrief recap, kind of next steps conversation. You know, I, I think there's a lot of other people that have meetings that start at seven. It'd be nice to have that conversation kind of maybe during our next meeting. And then maybe do the listening session during our second April regularly scheduled meeting. So we're kind of still focused on this topic, but maybe can kind of move forward with those two meetings without a lot of packet and staff report and kind of new, new items. As well as the road conversation. We, okay. Michael and then Ted, is that?
I was going to say for us, old and
I was going to say for us old and sometimes wise, but sometimes not smart guys, two, two meetings in one night is, is a stretch. So I'd rather do it the following in our first briefing meeting.
Ted?
Maybe Bernie has mentioned to you, but he mentioned to Helen, he would not be in attendance. Bernie Gaggen.
Yes, he did. I know his current work situation wouldn't let him get to a five o'clock meeting. I think seemed like everyone else on the commission was, I think Helen was just waiting to hear from two more counselors. So. So we may, we may wind up proceeding without Bernie. And so I guess anything else. So that actually started to get to my other business item that I wanted to talk about, which was the scheduling, but that actually wasn't next on the agenda. Did anyone have anything else on this or Paul, anything, oh, Paul Engels?
Is someone going to fill in for Paul Connor? I mean, you keep talking like we're going to be on our own. I'm surprised if the city doesn't have staff for us.
I nominate you, Paul.
Yeah, I didn't meet when we were totally without staff. Like we'll still have administrative staff to warn meetings and, you know, Sue to do our minutes. I think what I meant was Paul's been working super extra time to get us new packets and revisions every week here for a while. And you know, if we could have a meeting or two where we didn't need a lot of new work put into kind of preparing for our meeting, I think it would be helpful. So. Does that make sense, Paul? Is that kind of what you were?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct. And I guess what I'd say is we're also scheduling. I'm probably going to be out for some time in July and at that time there may be some separate projects that are not sort of directly related to this, but which are sort of in your queue that a different staff person could help you with. Jessica and I have been talking about this the last few days and you know, we want to be mindful of, of the project that is your number one priority, but also look at if there's some opportunities to fill in some, some additional work. So.
Yeah, I guess, I guess as an example, like one of the things that we put as a, as a side project, waiting for more information was the energy standards. You know, we were thinking maybe when Paul was out, we could have the energy committee in to kind of readdress that issue that we, we partially addressed, but kind of put on the side, kind of to wait for a new, some more information. So that was an example of something where maybe a different staff member or a joint meeting could be during that, that July period. Michael?
Just, is it right that Paul is going to be out about eight weeks? Is that right, Paul?
I'm going to be out about two to three weeks immediately. And then on a slightly reduced schedule for a little while and then out for about four weeks in July. So it's not one big chunk. So I think as Jessica talks about April, that's probably when I, when I don't, when I wouldn't be at one or both of the meetings. But then I would anticipate being able to be at May, in meetings in May, depending on when the kid is, comes.
Paul, can you, this is what I did right before I went on maternity leave many decades ago. Can you make like an ideal timeline getting us to completing everything with city council, getting public hearings done on both issues in November? Like what would, what would our ideal, considering all of everything, of your timing as well, like really being realistic, you know, what, what, let's if you had, if you could make them work out perfectly, what would that look like to you?
Sounds like you're channeling your inner Art Clugo.
Yes, and preemptively thinking about a question. I'm sure we'll hear from the council on this exact question. So you're right, we should have some idea prepared. Paul, I think we cut you off.
I just said that Andrew Chalmers has volunteered to staff the planning commission meetings.
I think, I think he volunteered to participate in the energy committee meeting in July. He's part of the energy group. So that's what I think he was responding to. So thank you, Andrew. I think that'll be good timing. Thanks. Duncan? Okay. And so again, oh, go ahead, Michael.
On the subject, should we also include some estimate of time that we might need to start drafting TDR regulations?
Yeah. I think that sounds like something else we should be doing. So.
Well, that's, those are some questions I think for this four, six meeting that would be very helpful. You know, what, if we go back to the initial IZ memo that told us what we're supposed to be doing, it would be very good to refresh ourselves with what that memo said and get clarity from the city council on what their expectations are for the end of IZ.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So expectations for the end of IZ. I think that that's a really great, we didn't specifically have that on the bullet list. So. Okay. Anything else on this item? We have a few little wrap up items here on the agenda still. Okay, we have minutes. We have March 3rd, March 9th, March 10th, March 16th. Oh my gosh, no wonder I feel tired. And Michael did send in some revisions which were included, I believe. Did you want to address that, Michael?
Yes, no, I was, if you, I was, though you weren't finished yet, but I was going to move that we approve the March 3rd, March 9th, March 10th. Minutes, I'm not sure about March 16th, but if everybody else is happy with that, I would include that in this motion to approve them.
Second.
Monica, second, any additional or discussion on the minutes? Duncan?
Real quick, the second set of the minutes for the ninth, say three March, we just need to change the date.
Yeah. I already, I think I pointed it out to Paul already.
It looks like we have three sets of minutes for the third, but the second one is actually the ninth.
Okay, thanks. Will do.
Great. We'll change the typo. Anything else? Okay, on favor of the minutes, I. Ted, okay, unanimous, very good. Thank you. Other, other business, we had a few items in there. We had items from Winuski and Burlington. Public hearings. So we generally put these in here so people kind of have an idea what's going on in other communities. Paul, did you see anything else on there?
Nothing that necessarily affects South Burlington specifically, but I did want to note that it's the Burlington amendments are to, for the first time specifically address short term rentals, which I know has been a topic that's been simmering sort of just below the surface here in South Burlington. So in all your free time, encourage you to take a look to see what they've been working on.
Okay. So then we have our upcoming meeting scheduled. We started to address this. So we talked about in April, having a follow up from the council meeting, a listening session on everything we're putting out for comment. Paul's also suggested talking about the I-89 interchange alternatives sometime in April. So that actually might be, need to be part of our next meeting. Or is that information available to have as part of our?
Yes, I'm going to be sending out some information tomorrow to you all that if, no requirement, but if you would like to weigh in on the, either the weighting of the different goals or on which of the five alternatives that you would like to specifically recommend after seeing all the evaluation criteria that the council advocate for moving forward, which two, then the, they're looking for that information in the first half of next month.
Monica?
Yeah, just to that, can we make sure that the Swift Street connection, extension is connected to that meeting? Like we need to kind of have this, there's, that information ties together in my mind. So can they just be on the same agenda?
We can attempt. So that would be our next regular meeting, right? It would, because if they need, how do they possibly need it April 19th? It's really frustrating.
It is. And that because the, that's, that's the urgency, the region, the regional commission is making their decision in early May, they said. So the, the city council needs to give, I think in the first two weeks of May, the city council has to give their recommendation.
Okay. Maybe we need to meet every week. Okay, we'll, we'll look at the having that discussion of both things on, in April. Yeah.
And I would encourage you, the recently completed Tilly Drive Community Drive Study did look at the traffic implications of a Swift Street extension, both with a 12B, without a 12B. So there is some information in there for you to think about. That, that would be helpful to your discussion. And I'll make sure that you've got, you can see that it's not a long part of the report, but it is, it is, it was specifically looked at.
Michael?
Yeah, just a point of information. Do we, does somebody answer or respond to the public's comments or questions that are, that appear in the chat? You know, if they aren't dealt with.
Almost always. So there were a few comments that we did not address because they are kind of more about public input on specific things we have on our draft. So we do monitor. So Roseanne, I know to your question, we do monitor the chat. We are reading it and it is part of our official record as well. Like even if there's a few things that we don't specifically talk about during the meeting.
And the other question is, I have in my calendar that we're meeting on the 13th and the 20th. Is that correct?
This is a great question for scheduling. So I think we had previously agreed, we were going to meet every week in March. And we didn't specifically talk about
April.
April. So I guess that's what we're talking about now.
Yeah.
It sounds yeah, it sounds like we may we may want to. I guess if we need to talk about the I-89 interchange plus the Swift Street extension in a meeting that really needs to happen at our next meeting, which we just talked about having kind of a debrief from the council discussion during that one. So, so maybe that's not the case. Maybe we, we don't have the debrief from the council discussion until maybe the next meeting as maybe the first part of our listening session. Maybe that makes sense to have kind of a recap of what we talked about with the council and then get into additional public comment and mapping and questions. Does that make sense?
The, the part that just concerns me is that after six, four, in my mind, Paul is not here with us. And if we wait that long, that's why I was just suggesting even like a half hour, because the, we know that the city meeting isn't going to go more than the, the six, the city council planning commission meeting will not go for more than, what would, what would our time be? An hour? With them, an hour and a half, do we know? Because they have to be somewhere, right? That's why, I mean, that meeting has to be done by seven. Right? So what I was suggesting is if we even just take like, we, we just remain on the call, do it, do a half hour debrief, you know, was there any big things that stood out? Because then somebody, and I don't know if, because I'm the clerk, am I, should I be taking some notes as well? Because we have to assume that we won't have Paul to guide us through the, the summary of that. We're going to have to, we'll have the minutes, of course, but.
Well, so I do think that the planning commission should have a short time at the end of our meeting on four, six to set some kind of end of public comment and/or have the possibility of warning this for a public hearing. So we did kind of talk about that earlier. So I do think that maybe the council could drop off at that point and we could have a commission discussion at the end of that meeting. We could have a little short debrief, I suppose. I mean, Michael was suggesting that felt late and was hoping we wouldn't do it that.
I can stay awake for that.
Okay.
This is Sue. I have to join that DRB meeting at seven. And you need to make sure that there is coverage so that I can do whatever you discuss afterwards from a tape.
Okay.
Whatever you discuss afterwards needs to be taped.
Thank you, Sue. And I think, is that going to be possible, Paul? It will have two video. Okay. So we're getting.
We have two different accounts. So they're on different, they're on different channels.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds like we'll do a short debrief and talk about our public comment at the end of the council joint meeting. Great. Sandy, did you have something on our schedule?
It was in the chat. Earlier, there was a comment that the council had requested the commission to deal with the environmental standards first. So it was not my understanding that that request was made.
It's not.
And I was asking you for a clarification.
Okay. I thought I did actually say that the council had not instructed us one way or the other. And that's why we weren't making that decision to warn the public hearing tonight. We wanted to have that joint meeting first. So is what I, yes. So the answer is yes. Okay. The one other thing that I want to add to other business, and then I think we're at the end was I, I got some kind of emails. I got an email from, and I'm going to forward this to you. I just wanted to like mention it before you got a kind of blind email about it. But we got some additional information from Ray Gonda about habitat, habitat buffers and buffers in general. And then we kind of additionally got on that same topic, a letter from Arrowood Environmental that Ray had kind of reached out to them to ask for their opinion on habitat buffers as well. And then subsequently, there were some emails back and forth with some counselors and city staff about kind of separate from the policy and the information and the science, but more about the kind of appropriateness of one person kind of reaching out to a city consultant. And I just wanted to kind of mention to us, because when we had, we've had a couple of different discussions about kind of individuals on the commission kind of acting individually or versus kind of using their planning commission hat. And I think this was a case where kind of an individual reached out to the city consultant kind of with their city hat on. So you may, you may see some kind of emails or correspondence about that kind of particular issue of, you know, whether or not it's appropriate to, you know, reach out to a consultant or someone on behalf, kind of on behalf of the city. So we got some clarification from Kevin that, you know, any of us kind of, it's not really appropriate for me or, or any of us to reach out to a city consultant with questions. That's really the purview of staff. Because it could kind of incur expense, you know, if, if a consultant thought that we were kind of asking questions or requesting a work product on behalf of the city. So we just want to make sure we're always kind of clear with our kind of correspondence. You know, if we're acting kind of as a committee or as an individual. So I just wanted to kind of address that kind of separate point, separate from the information that we'll be getting about, about buffers. There was kind of that separate piece about kind of reaching out to a consultant or not. So, so I will also kind of take that to heed. I will never on my own, reach out to one of our consultants and ask for information. You know, it's always going to be staff doing that kind of correspondence for. kind of correspondence for us, so we're not kind of acting outside of agreed upon scope. Michael?
Is it okay for us to ask for information that's sent from somebody at the Department of Environmental Conservation, or somebody like Ethan Tapper, or Jens Hilker, to, you know, to get some information from them?
You know, it's interesting you say that. I think that's a little, a little different, you know, they're not, they're a state resource. So, you know, I have reached out on our behalf to some of those state resources with questions, like you said, Jan Toca, as well as some of the people on the Wetlands Group for information, which then I forwarded on. We've also asked for information from the Rivers Program, when we were working on the floodplain and river corridor. So I guess it'd be nice to actually hear from Paul, kind of what your perspective on that. It is, it does feel different to me, you know, a state employee resource versus kind of a consultant.
I, I think it is somewhat different in terms of that piece of it. I would still encourage that the, for all committees, that the individual communicate with the full committee or full commission about what you're thinking about doing. So that, you know, if it's something that's very clearly, you know, Paul, you're being asked to, you know, do some homework to look into blank, blank, blank subject, then that's fairly reasonable, and probably right in line. But if it's sort of exploratory, I might suggest that it be something that you're all in the loop with one another about. So there's no surprises, and so that the person can be speaking on behalf of the commissions interested in this subject. So that'd be my suggestion for you, just for you all to be aware of what, what each other is, is doing and communicating.
Yeah. Okay, so I think, I mean, I don't know if people have questions. I'll send over the information I got as well. I just wanted to kind of address that more official piece separately as well. So. Good. Any, anything else? I think that was the end of everything on the agenda. Michael, and then Monica?
Monica should go first, because I was going to move to adjourn.
Okay, Monica?
I just was gonna quickly ask, so when we're in the meeting next week, Paul, will you also have the calculator that we've been working with? Because that just may, it may come in handy, maybe just be prepared.
Yes, I'll, I'll have a bunch of things ready like that in, in the event. I would encourage you to, two hours is gonna go very quickly. So sort of think strategically about, you know, making sure that you're getting feedback on the key issues that you're looking to get feedback on. But yes, I usually have six or seven things in the background, ready to go just in case.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone. I know this went longer than our 8:30 adjournment moment on the agenda. So this was, this was really good. I think we're prepared for next week. So thank you. Have a great night.
Great, good night.
Night.